We've been in executive session with the town attorney and do not believe we have a motion to adjourn the executive session. I'd like to resume the agenda for tonight's meeting. I apologize for the delay, but the executive session has been held away from our state.
I'm going to go into executive.
Pardon me?
We've got to go into executive.
Yes, we have.
So I move the way.
Okay, I got the call of the executive session, the second by Jean Hathaway. Do you have anything to say? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Please rise for pleasure. Not that I get it. My pleasure.
... United States of America, as you know, I look for which stance, what agency, what services, what liberty, service.
Thank you very much. First part of business will be the minutes of our last meeting.
It seems pretty good.
That's okay.
I move the way.
We have a motion accepted. The minutes are presented.
Seven seconds.
For the public. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of acceptance, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. While Attorney Sperry is here, we'd ask him to sweep the board on the municipal ordinance of a street procedure recently drafted by the legislature. Would you bring it out of the chair?
Until approximately November of this year, if you had a municipal ordinance with a penalty situation in it, it was a criminal violation. There was no such thing as a civil penalty. And if you wanted to collect it, you had to go to the state's attorney, and the state's attorney would have to prosecute something. State's attorneys have got a lot of work to do, and violation of a dog ordinance may not be the highest priority on their list. But the way it worked is that if you could get a prosecution and there was a fine, statutes provide that. It all comes back to the town eventually, except for six bucks of each fine, which stays with the state. And if it's a traffic offense, then another seventeen and a half bucks stays with the state, which funds a program that I forget, but it's all in the statutes. So everything except six bucks for a regular ordinance violation should come back, but you can't get the state's attorneys to prosecute, or it's difficult to, the reason I have to state it. This year, the legislature passed a new statute, and what they said was now there's two kinds of ordinances. So you can do this ordinance by ordinance. You don't have to do this with all your ordinances. You can pick and choose. And there's two kinds of ordinances. What is a civil violation and what is a criminal violation? If you designate your ordinance a civil violation, which means you go through the amended procedure, then that ordinance will automatically carry a civil penalty of not more than $500 to get in a court, and there's some discretion to whether you go up that high depending upon the severity of the offense. And every day that the violation continues is a separate violation. Okay, now, if you have, and this works best for a single offense-type violation. Somebody lets a dog run at large once, I don't know, that's a good example. Somebody burns something, you have a burning ordinance. Somebody dumps something, you have a recycling ordinance, and they violate it. And you don't want to go in a superior court, and you can't get the state's attorney to do anything about it. And what they have is now a traffic ticket system, except it's called a municipal ordinance system. It looks just like this. And it works the same way the traffic court does. There's a hearing officer. The hearing officer will be sitting here in Rutland. There's a lot of benefits to it because the town can prosecute them themselves. You don't need a lawyer to show up and represent the town. The selectmen just designate somebody as an enforcement officer. It's relatively quick. You get, maybe I called off the people at the traffic bureau today, or announced the traffic and municipal ordinance bureau, and they have about a ninety-day backlog. There is no discovery. The fines go the same way I've just described. In fact, for municipal ordinance, they just keep six bucks. If it's not traffic, they just keep six bucks. Everything else comes back to you. You can give them an incentive to plead by setting up what they call waiver penalties. In other words, you can say, for the first offense, it's $100, second offense it's $200, third offense it's $300. But if you plead no contest or plead guilty and send in, in the first offense it's $50, second offense it's whatever. And Supreme Court has a system that allows that to happen. There's good and there's bad in that from the traffic court, there's appeal to the district court, and there's nowhere else to go from there. Unless the Supreme Court allows on a case-by-case basis, you can't be dragged into the Supreme Court. And conversely, you can't drag somebody into the Supreme Court either. The burden of proof is a bit higher. It's something weird. It's clear and convincing evidence. I forget the language now. Clear and convincing evidence that it's highly probable that the violation occurred, or something like that. But I don't think that's a particular drawback. The drawback, the problem with the statute, or maybe it is an advantage, I don't know, but if the fines are more than $500, which you could have in a continuing violation situation, or injunctive relief is sought, you have to go to superior court. And if you, if you're, most of your major stuff, for example, if somebody is discharging something bad into the sewer system on a continuous basis, day in and day out, where you have huge fines, you're going to end up in superior court. This system is not going to work for you, this traffic ticket system. But it seems to me that in that situation, if you get in a superior court and you're suing a civil action for the fines, don't forget, these are the fines you couldn't get otherwise because the state's attorneys are reluctant to prosecute. You're in a position where if the municipal traffic ordinance situation won't work, the ordinance will let you go into superior court to get an injunction and to get those fines in excess of $500. I don't think it's a bad system all in all. I looked at it, I had my doubts about it to begin with. I think for some of our ordinances, though, it might work. I went through a couple of them today with Joe. It isn't going to work for a violation of subdivision regulations. If you passed zoning ever, it wouldn't work for zoning. I haven't really studied the sewer ordinance to see whether it would work for that. But for example, for your dog ordinance, for your recycling ordinance, what are some of the others, Joe?
I'd say septic ordinance, perhaps.
Septic ordinance.
Noise ordinance.
Noise ordinance, yeah, noise ordinance. It's worked there. And I think the major advantage is that you can, you get people, it's not like you can stick these things on their windshield. You either have to send the sheriff to serve them, or you have to send them in the mail. And there is some paperwork, but you can get people into a system fairly quickly where if they're violating, they can be fined. Now, maybe you don't want to do that. Maybe you aren't interested in that approach. But if you are, I don't think it's a bad system all in all. Tickets, they've got a whole ticket situation, or summons, I don't know what, but I just showed you. And this kind of hang and lot paperwork that they have, I think probably a bit better than what we have now all in all from those ordinances that it will work for.
Let's probably think about it. We don't need to do anything, right?
No, there's no hurry on any of that.
It's like, it's good at some and not at others.
Yeah. You have, for example, I think we've sent you some amendments for the dog ordinance. And if you pass them, at that point, you're going to have to make a decision. Do you want to stay with the old system? You can always go in the court on this for getting injunction. Somebody's doing it day after day after day after day, or whatever.
Yeah, if you cite them, they don't appear they lost. They appear, I'm assuming that's the way this works, same as the
Same as traffic.
System. If they don't appear, they're lost. If the citing person doesn't appear.
Exactly. It's exactly the same system.
Same system.
I'll be familiar with it. Yeah, administered by the same people. But when the next time around that you pass a new ordinance, you are going to have to make a decision on it because you have to elect. Is it going to be sewer criminal?
I just got one thing in mind. Joe goes to fines. We've had some pretty good ones on the violation of the sewer. Would that be affecting us over the $500 thing with that?
Well, we've only had one that's gone back far, that went to court with us to tag it.
Those aren't fines. Those are
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at. Would that be independent of this?
Yes.
Okay, so it's no problem.
Those are fees to cover.
So it wouldn't be a problem?
No.
Could you refer to us the ordinances that we could adopt in this particular system?
Oh, you're right now if they are. You've got the noise ordinance, the recycling ordinance, the dog ordinance that we have now, or the new one, whatever, private sewer ordinance, probably the septic system connection ordinance. We have to do some special work on that. Somebody connects to the sewer and they're not, they don't get a permit, that sort of thing. I think those are the only ones we have right now.
About the parking ordinance?
No.
Done with those?
It's parking. You can't just
Speeds?
Speeds, no, where the less traffic anyway. That's all covered anyway automatically.
Yeah, something I think we should consider because the system is so backed up, so bogged down. It takes forever to get these things through. I think we have to take a look at that.
Depends on your philosophy to enforce on them. It's that you want to get people's attention. Getting a ticket which says the first time around, you pay $50 if you plead guilty, or $25 even that. Apparently, the trick is to make what they call a waiver fee really low. And then the, I'll check the strategy, and then the penalties can be up to $500. So there's incentive to pay the waiver fees, and presumably if they do it, it not that repeats.
There's no pressure to add to something.
You know?
You don't.
No, no, the next time you have adopted, you've got to designate. You've got to designate, you put away the other.
You've got to adopt each ordinance drafted, and you should be doing that when that comes up.
You want to address that, right?
According to Doctor, they have to make the decision to go this procedure.
Okay, so that's why I would make a doctor of the draft.
We'll deal with it in two weeks. We've had this a long time, and if I recall, nobody had a problem with the ordinance itself, the way it's drafted, the language, or whatever. Left aside, two weeks, I'll assume we're going to start the adoption process and then go legal.
Do you want sample civil ordinance bureau fines system? I drafted one, but I don't know if Ken sent it down.
I don't know if this year, or not.
Yeah. Okay.
That's all I have on this one. Okay, what I'd like to do along with Mark is here, is to move around the agenda for one more item. That would be these property road gate matter. Joe, do you want to give us a brief rundown as to what has transpired the last two weeks on that?
A couple of things. The first was prices for bringing electricity in. And we've gotten a price of approximately, an estimate of $1,050 to bring electrical power to that site. Another price of $450 for excavating work. So you're looking at about $1,500 to hook up a gate after it's purchased. But one of the things that came out Friday, which is one of the reasons we want to talk to Mark, is the question of who owns the road itself. There's a question here whether the state ever deeded that road back over to the town. And if that's the case, it's not the town's road to make a decision to close. It's owned by the state. It would take a year or more to get that road turned back over to the town. We're in the process now of getting a road done by the holladine that we applied for last year. We got one in center. That one took a year to get that one. So Mark's going to research it a little further. But it may be that the state of Vermont has never relinquished that property to the town. So you really couldn't, you know, put a gate up right now if you don't want to run.
Want to talk about if you do own the road? Okay, if you do own the road, as I understand, it comes out, and this is what I call Route Three, I guess, but it comes out of Route Four, and then you can take a shortcut over to New Route Three, which has only been there three years, so it's New Route Three to meet. And if you want to dead-end the road, you really have to discontinue some part of it. You can't just put a big on across because the public has a right to go over public highway until it ceases to be public highway. If you, if you, the discontinuance procedure requires that you go through, it's a formal procedure where you have to make a determination that the public interest and necessity requires the discontinuance, even if it's for 10 feet at the end, say. If you do that, normally what happens is the land reverts to the landowners on both sides. That doesn't do you any good because you want to be able, as I understand it, to have the gate and then be able to go through.
That's right.
So what you do is, it's kind of strange, but you discontinue it, but leave the discontinued part as a trail. And then you can control it, and it doesn't have to be passable by motor vehicles, except when you want it to be. It's a kind of awkward procedure, but it's really the only one that works, unless you can make an arrangement with the landowners at the end that they will, after you discontinue it, they'll convey you something back in some other capacity.
Is a trail a class four road?
No, trail is a trail.
Less than a class four?
Yeah, if you turn it into a class four road, they'd still be able to pass over it. If it's a trail, you can close it off, except for select fire vehicles, or fire plow.
I don't think you have to make it on a trail.
So you can just let it grow. But obviously, if it's a state road, then you have to do something different. Get the state to dead-end it if you can.
The situation is such there that you've got a motion of that, but it might then become part of the state right away.
Yes.
So you have to look beyond that.
Yes.
Further into the road itself. Establish where that trail
That's right. You have to find the part where the town, again, Joe sent me, faxed me up the deeds today, but it's all station this, and left this, and right this, and whatever. And I put out a map. I can't figure out what happened.
Somebody have to research the title before you can tell us.
I just have to look at the deeds and some maps with Joe.
I've got a call in also to Wayne Jarvis at the District Highway Office. He up there, his records couldn't find whether the state relinquished it back to the town. But he's checking with Montpelier. We should know tomorrow.
Yeah, town's been plowing all these years, stuff like that.
Well, most of us sitting here can't relate to when it was done because, you know, we weren't, we weren't selectmen at that time. It was probably thirty years ago or better. So, you know, whoever was on the board back then would have been involved in it.
As I say, I haven't talked to the We can talk about the I don't know. I don't know. I don't have any chance.
The situation is so similar on the old four, which was constructed back in the late 1950s. Four lane was constructed in the late 50s, and what was left of the old four was never dated to the town. And we've been going through that for several years. So it seemed to be a problem with getting roads dated that were abandoned by the state.
I'm surprised at this because usually they get rid of them if they don't, a situation like this.
They probably do now, but they did in the 50s and 60s. That's where we're in the problem with today. So basically, on hold until we can get legal work done. It could be quite a while.
That's interesting.
Yeah, if it's a state road, you certainly think of that.
I would gamble that.
Can we do anything to it if it's a state? Theoretically, you're not supposed to be plowing unless you've got some arrangement with them.
I'll get paved again.
Joe, we owe you money.
Never get it.
Can I ask a question about
Sure.
Did the marshal on the, putting the stop sign?
Yeah.
Do you want me to go with? Does he make any difference, George?
It's helped, obviously. I think it's helped 100%. We live in Maplewood Park, and I can see a big cut down in the traffic. The thing of it is, we're all stopping coming out of the park. The people on the other road aren't used to it. They're the ones running the lights, so they've got to be a little bit more careful.
On the stop sign.
Mm-hmm. So that
She up over there.
I'd say it's more of a need for certain reduction in traffic.
Really?
Even though I'm usually in the school buses, they're picking up the kids. We're usually good during the morning. There's been a lot of cars sailing through. Last two weeks, it's been real minimal, at 1:00. I made a point of watching. I would say it's about 100% plus.
It's helped a lot.
It's slower 20 after 7, too. Much slower. At 8:00, I'll tell you the traffic has slowed down considerably on that road. You don't see half the cars you used to see anymore.
I don't know if anyone's suggested, is there another street further down toward the end that we could put another stop sign on that wouldn't affect most of the people that live there? There's no, it would only affect that street coming up also. It wouldn't do any
Yeah, the Grand
The Grand Lays down there, but you'd have to stop sign for them coming up, and that wouldn't do any, have any effect on this. I was just thinking People have the time to wait on that, and then they really get sick of it.
Yeah, it's almost
No, it is an improvement. What my misunderstanding is, they say they take our road to beat the light. But when we get down to the end to come on to the Route Four, they've got to wait for the traffic to light.
The light just went green. It's a lot of cars, yeah.
Well, it isn't an improvement. It really is. Thank you. It's helped a lot.
Anything else from Matt? Thank you very much. That takes care of the I'm going to investigate. Thank you. Sorry for the water, so that's pretty well done, I guess. Somebody in G U M says that.
Question from the floor, other than Adrian.
Yeah, I want to commend the board, and I'm glad to say I was able to recite a part of allegiance with you. It took us 10 whole seconds. We got people, I'm listening. As Mark, you seem to be able to lose the time. We'd upset the routine. Try and separate it to us. This line, John, it's really, it took us 12, so. Just like this way. I hope it didn't affect you to what this schedule. I'm going, that's all I have to say.
Okay. Any other
I'm sorry, I'm going to go out of this side, but I know why I worked plenty of hard work.
The county not listen to town votes. I have to warn that the town wanted to have that done, and he goes up to Matt and he says no.
Can I respond? Yeah, sure. The town voted, that's a crazy, which I agree with them on. I actually went into the chamber planning to vote for the, what I voted for was saying the pledge once a week rather than every day. And I'll tell you the reason that I changed my vote, and I was voting down and vote for every day. I changed my vote because the tone of the debate that really came from people who questioned patriotism and questioned people's morals. I mean, there were, I had no problem saying the pledge allegiance every day, but I'm not going to be voted by people who think I have to explain my allegiance to a country. And I don't think people on the town want to stay roughly. I don't think they want to be voted. But people who really overstepped their bounds, I mean, if you were out of control, had they not said anything, I would have voted for it. Totally, totally out of control. And I've said on the floor of the House, I will not be pushed around by people who think that they have another hand on patriotism.
In other words, you're not listening to people in the town hearing?
Well, yeah. I voted for that one.
Well, he's not talking about the desecration. He's talking about the pledge allegiance. When we hit put that line, I'm not mining it, it was about the desecration, but I'm sure you're going to see it, I mean, regardless of what your conscience is.
I'm going to vote against, I'm going to vote for the amendment for, the amendment prohibiting desecration of the flag. I agree with that. Those who vote on that, this is an example of what I'm talking about. People, I wish the people who, I agree with them, the issue of allegiance and desecration of the flag, the people who are leading proponents of it are totally out of control. There's a couple of legislators who are pushing things way beyond the line of decency. What they tried to do the first week we were there, they'd introduced a resolution, which I had signed on to, which I wanted to vote for, saying that we shouldn't burn the flag. But they wouldn't let the committee chairman, who got the bill, have a hearing. They want it done like that. Totally inappropriate in terms of behavior in the legislature. So I support the chairman, who I think supports the amendment, and will get the bill out in the future. And I will vote for it. But I'm not going to go up to the legislature and let anyone tell me how I have to vote, or what I have to do, question my patriotism. It's not appropriate. It's not right. And I don't think Vermonters want us up there at the beginning of the session, with people using intimidation and strong-arm tactics to get an appointed boss.
But can't you take that issue on while at the same time preserving the integrity of your position? I mean, it seems to me you gave up, you know, you might have cut your nose off to spite your face by voting against it.
Well, I'm going to for saying the pledge allegiance once a week. I think that's, I think that's appropriate. I mean, I think it's, it's fine. And I'm going to vote for the constitutional amendment, you know, not to desecrate the flag. But I think once a week is fine. I'm not going to say it every single day. And I'd be happy to say it every day. No problem. But I'm not going to be told that I'm less than American because I won't say it every day.
Most of us only say it once every two weeks. Over here, most of us don't even say it. One more time I ever said it.
Well, except when we started saying it more. Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, what happened with that debate was it was less about patriotism, what you really thought about the pledge allegiance. And it turned into a partisan debate about which party is more loyal to its country and which party is going to win more elections because of the flag issue. You know, I was going into the chamber, ready to vote for the flag, or for the pledge allegiance. But I'm not going to sit there. I'm not, anybody's bullying me or bullying my colleagues, Democrat or Republican. They're questioning our loyalty. And I thought it was totally in the opinion of the Vermont legislature. And the members, and some of our new members, they have a lot to learn, I think. But they overstepped their bounds, and I think we sent them a message. But you can't do that. There's some people there who will not be pushed around. And I hope they got the message that I wanted.
Excuse me, the chairman, but it sounds to me like you're telling us that you're voting in favor of saying the pledge of allegiance.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, but it sounds to me like you're telling us that you're voting in favor of saying the pledge of allegiance. But according to what the taxpayers and the town, including myself and some others, are really upset about this. Then it sounds to us like you voted against saying the pledge of allegiance to these United States and that's why I agree there. And fella, I would suggest that you get something in the paper or something, talk to the individuals in this town. Because it sounds damn right unpatriotic the way you came across the role in here. By voting no, trade the hell, you voted no against the pledge of allegiance.
I voted no against saying, ever for saying it once a week, no for saying it every single day.
Well, that is not the way it came across in the paper and it doesn't sound good to the, to myself and the great Republicans that I've talked to in the past few days.
You know, I hope that throughout the two years I'll be able to explain to people whenever they have a concern.
I think you should explain it to them now, sir.
Well, I hope that I have.
Well, I'm sure the role of the board isn't going to say much about it and a lot of people don't want to shut up, I think. But I'm really upset, this is the first time that anything that's happened in the legislature which affects us every day, really is bothering. That you won't say the pledge of allegiance every day or once a week or whatever. It sounds like you came across as saying, I will not say the pledge of allegiance.
I'm sorry to upset you, I really am. It wasn't my intention to do that. I have no problem saying the pledge of allegiance, I'll say it. But again, the real question at that point in the debate was, um, am I going to allow these people to uh, act on the floor of the house in a way that was totally unbecoming of the state legislature?
That is up to the rule, so that's actually is it, uh? It's not up to the individual, that, your individual responsibility is to tell the, the town of Rutland people. You were elected by the people of the town of Rutland for the town people.
Right.
That's the constitution.
Right.
Hey, you've got to serve us, not yourself. And the people in the state of the mouth.
That's what, that's what I find it's weird.
Well, I just don't want to talk so well to me, I believe, a lot of people in town of Rutland.
Uh, I hope that if, you know, people have questions about why I did vote for one, I will certainly explain to them.
And I think they'll agree.
Yeah.
I hope people come out in public and speak to all, you know, in the paper or something.
There's an opportunity, certainly, you know.
To wait till.
Any other discussion on that?
David? Not on that, on another issue. Sure. But um, uh, according to the article, the February day on zoning, there'd been some discussion about getting a petition to get it onto the March ballot and uh, I researched this some with Mark Blucher at the Regional Commission and it also called Joe about it. And uh, the statute provides, there can be a town vote on it by petition, but that, that vote, um, essentially they have to wait one year of the date of the final hearing of the planning commission. Uh, do you already know this or maybe you don't? But uh, my concern was that by circumventing the selectmen, they'd also be circumventing the hearing process, which will help to improve the document. And I think many of the planning commission members the other night admitted that there are still flaws in the document and it needs fine tuning. So I certainly hope and I believe they'll become convinced it's important to have hearings at the selectmen's level and not proceed to a vote on it in March, which appears to be impossible anyway, according to the statute. Um, I did uh, place a call to Mary Ashcroft and, and talked to Harold and, and I didn't talk to Mary, I talked to Harold. And he said she came to a similar understanding after reading the statute, which is different with some other things. You can get immediate a petition and put it on the ballot immediately, but with this, there's that. So essentially what we're saying is by roughly October, November of next year, if the selectmen still haven't dealt with the zoning issue, then the people could uh, have it put on the ballot and then there wouldn't be a hearing. But uh, I would expect within that timeframe, the board of selectmen will be dealing with the zoning question. So I, I, I just think it's important that something that important, that touches everybody's life, wouldn't be railroaded uh, by a quick vote.
As I said, I believe after our meeting with the planning commission last Thursday night, that was my intention for this board to hold at least one public hearing. As we've always done, as long as I've been a slacker. Anytime that we've adopted any document of any kind, we always allow a public input. Because this zoning document became our document, then I feel we're only compelled and we should hold at least one public hearing uh, prior to starting any adoption process. And my personal opinion is because the issue affects every individual in the town of Rutland that owns a piece of property, that it should be decided by a townwide vote rather than by um, the mere adoption process that we normally would use, such as an ordinance to be done. Uh, others may disagree with me, but that's my own personal belief that it should be done by a townwide vote. Whenever that may happen, you know, we can't determine at this time, but I think that would afford everybody an opportunity uh, to have their say whether they want to adopt it or not.
Can we do a, a mailing similar to what we've done with the uh, bypass committee? When it comes time for our public hearings of the people? Because I think, you know, if it's just, sometimes this gets bugged and I agree with you, that I think that we should get as much input as we can and then put it to a vote.
I didn't look at, at putting a piece in the paper, a big piece in the paper and just check out certain things in it. It's going to really hire folks that they know this is just a proportion of what's going to happen to you if you, if this thing is voted in.
Well, that's uh, we have to warn any hearings anyway. Uh, there's a scheduling update here too. I know it's sat through numerous town plan hearings. And they're very, they're very important hearings, uh, for designated land use. Now, zoning is restricted land use. And uh, I think it's very, very important that everyone has an opportunity to come in and express how they feel and exactly what, what are flaws, what are good things about, certainly there are good things about it. And give us the necessary input because it's our document, we have to support it and we have to enforce it. And uh, I think the voting process is the best way to do that.
Definitely should be voted on, however, we should make sure that it's the proper document before we give it to the voters because they're going to rely on what we've dealt with.
I think you have to have hearings to do that. I don't think, I don't think you cannot have hearings and get the input that you need, you have to have hearings. Okay? Any other questions from the floor or comments? Here we go, we move on. Uh, we have no help, they're building on city courts. Highway, marshal fish, anything on roads? That kind of a break in our winter maintenance. Yes, situation. Save us some of summer money and plowing, sowing and sanding for the last twelve days.
We've been doing this one.
Yes. But uh, it should certainly help our, our winter maintenance budget.
Yeah.
Uh, recreation, Karen Boss, he's not here. The planning commission, you know, at that level, I would like to ask the board if they would like to set a date for a public hearing on this only document.
I would.
What's that? I would like to. Do we have any changes that we may want to enter before we get into the public hearing so that that part of it will be taken care of?
Well, one of the changes I want to see is on that pre-existing use. I don't think a year is enough time if somebody was running into trouble with builder or rebuilding their project. That should be changed, I would think. I think the planning commission acknowledged that one year is a pretty short period of time to require somebody to rebuild.
Well, there's another serious change that also, if, if you better, a business today on a three quarter year to go off. Nothing under a four acre will comply here on it. If that business gets destroyed totally by fire or something, you don't comply. You will never be able to put the business you may have had to offer a hundred years in again. And I think that should be addressed. If something is there, I'm happy to go off today.
Okay, I didn't understand that from reading.
Absolutely.
Is that?
And if it gets destroyed beyond sixty percent, it's like washed up. And then you don't comply. And if this is the case, we're, we're better looking at that closely. That's got to be changed, if that's the case.
It did sound to me like they wanted to change much or anything that we said, we were said to.
It, it, you know, whichever page you read, it might have been where you heard against you. You could read four or five different pages on any particular item and I tell you, that's, but you look at that closely. But, but if that's the case, I mean, it's got to be taken care of. At least a trillion, uh, fires happen and where I read that thing, if it's anything beyond sixty percent of destruction, it's like a all gone. And if it's all gone and it wasn't on a political law, then you don't comply with the acre requirement. That's right, requirement, so that you wouldn't be able to rebuild, so it always been.
Okay, see, I read that a little different. I read, you couldn't build, but you had.
Why don't you look at it again? And if you can read it so that that's right, fine, but. I would have two, there's two or three different uh, sections in there to refer to them. And we just want to make sure that that's uh, that's the original, let's look that up again.
Is that something we can do? We can make those type of changes? While we have a public hearing?
You need that to be done before we have a public hearing.
I think you, if you're going to make any changes to a document, you need to make it fifteen days before the hearing. So that way, anyone who came in would have to notice of it. They wouldn't come in and see something different than what you put a notice in the paper for. So you can change it, but make the changes at least fifteen days before we sort of notice anything.
Wait, can we change it now though, or would we have to send it back to them? If we have our public hearing, then we can make changes.
We can change it now.
After the public hearing.
Change it now, then warn them, but don't make any changes fifteen days before that hearing.
I didn't know we could make any changes before we have a public hearing. Yeah, at this point, it's just a proposal since the view from the planning commission and, and anyone in town can come, come up in with an alternate document. And it's, and you make your decision, you're the decision makers on this at this point, as to what's going to be in that document. What the planning commission submitted to you as a recommendation. And what I was going to suggest, what you might want to consider is a formation of a committee of those that are interested. Some, maybe some planning commission members and a couple of selectmen and some townspeople that are interested. I know there were some changes that members of the planning commission the other night seemed to be in favor of. And it's a question how these changes are going to be made and so that you don't get bogged down with these hearing uh, timeframes. I would suggest that you try and get the document, some of the changes made prior to, to scheduling.
That's what I'm going to say, something will begin, I think we should make some changes before we even enter that.
And what they're doing that would be to convene a committee or group and with Joe, and Joe's got a lot of changes that were recommended the other night and others will be brought forward and you selectmen have some and it's just a matter of going through and, you know, changing the document. And then uh, you will, you know, notice it for hearing and then people will come forward at the hearing and you may have changes after that, which will necessitate another hearing. Eventually it's one of those deals every time. But it seemed like in the beginning, with so many questions and possible changes, it might be better to have a committee go through the document. Um, so you'd have more chance of developing the consensus of, of the different parties. They had more time.
Yeah. So you just want to postpone uh, standing on a public hearing until the corrections are made or the adjustments are made in the document that were filed the other night.
Dave's idea of a committee, I can pass it along to the planning commission, they can maybe offer you some means if that's what you want.
Yeah, I, I, you know, so that you could take some action, I, I would suggest, you know, just uh, uh, either you appoint a committee or convene a meeting and uh, someone would need to be there like Joe was the other night to, to list the problem areas. Um, and it'd be helpful, I think, to have a selectman or two there because you're going to make the decision to give the feeling, you know, it's at least a hollow couple to tell. And uh, some of these changes, I, I think the planning commission would endorse. In fact, they seemed the other night like talking in favor of some, some changes. Yeah, they should be involved too, if they're members who are more active in the drafting of it. But it's probably who would form the committee, I, I would say it's up to the board of selectmen at this, this point, you know, perhaps ask the planning commission, set a date for a meeting and uh, you know, invite the planning commission members that want to participate, plus, you know, interested uh, town residents or however you want to handle it.
Planning commission meets again on February 2nd, I can bring it up that, I'm sure there's a couple who would probably.
Sure. So let's see what kind of interest they have. If they have any, any different approaches, how to deal with it.
Would you be willing to sit on it, Dave?
I'd, I'd be happy to participate, you probably know. I mean, the other option is for us to write another document, which was one thing I had in mind. If they had the ability to petition this and, and get it on the ballot, I would have suggested to have an alternative document and have two, two zone proposals before the people. But I, I don't think that's necessary and I think it would serve the townspeople better to work together with the planning commission and the towns and try and arrive to a consensus rather than giving the townspeople the planning commission version, the selectment version. It, it seemed like it'd make more sense to try and come to an agreement, you know, at the, at the level of the officials and then present it to the townspeople.
Okay. You'll uh, you'll raise that issue one second, Joe? We'll see what their response is, we'll proceed from there. Okay?
Sure.
All right. You have anything else to, to your, or no?
Yeah, the regional, the only thing that, last meeting I talked to you about the municipal planning uh, fund, sort of a complicated question there. And uh, as it turns out, the last meeting, the regional planning commission did support continuation of that fund which comes from uh, the property transfer tax. Um, and I did raise a question with Mark Blucher about giving essentially taxing authority for the regional planning commission and uh, uh, he has a different point of view on it, but uh, at this point, I guess it's waiting to see what legislature's going to do with it. And I'll try and keep you advised if it seems to be, you know, going very far in legislature.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have anything for David?
Do you want to take it in the next minute, Kim?
Please. Industrial assistant, Jones and Gal.
Um, yes, Rob, right. One of the things I have, Steve would probably speak to, um, help the sidewalks. Basically, um, what Steve would like to try to do is get some money from the state financial support to uh, build the sidewalk along US Route 4 East in town. Somewhere from the Rutland Mall extending towards Mendon. As you know, it was a terrible accident up there where the kid got hit on the bicycle and we've had reports over the years from several businesses about increasing traffic problems and near misses. So Steve thinks he could be successful with the, the agency getting some, some funds. But to be helpful, we need a letter from the board of selectmen, basically summarizing the problems we've had up there and a request for any assistance that may be available. Uh, with your permission, I can put something together.
What does it cost to us?
That's why Steve could, so maybe he would believe that he's thinking of doing that. The, the two head, I mean, you're out, which may need a small block.
Is that what you're picking up from this? Three line.
Believe me, while you're on that, you'll also auto enter into that South Main Street section, I'm going to tell you, down through where the, 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 a corner road and that new mall. Oh, God, that's.
It's got to be a sidewalk down there.
They're walking in the road down there now.
It's uh, when they're walking, they're all, all along. Seven and four, around the town. For some, I don't know who paid for this, whether the city paid for the sidewalks in the city limits or.
I don't know.
What happened, but um, it's my understanding that the state is supposed to build sidewalks along uh, municipal highways or uh, I'm sorry, along, along state highways. Um, and so I'm trying to get them to do that in the town. They seem to stop at the city limit and they're not continuing. Um, and I don't know if that's because there was a sidewalk there previously, or replaced it or, or what, but. So we're working on the signature to try to get that done. The other question is if we can get some transportation money in the budget to help towns build um, sidewalks on municipal highways. Like Post Road from Tzana Drive to the town school where we have kids walking sidewalks.
How do we make that with a bike path? That was, that was a good one to them.
Uh, the bike path, the problem with the bike path is it, first of all, it's a grant program, so you got to win. Uh, it's very competitive, there's lots of money in it, but you can't build a bike path on um, you can't build a bike path next to a road. And you also have all sorts of requirements, the grades, the grades. Which is not why I wouldn't have those kinds. You don't have to put a real nice fancy sidewalk in, you can just put a paved path, but it'd be nice to have something so the kids aren't walking on the, walking the road right there. So most of the people, and I thought women dragging their groceries up from Martin's, walking on Woodstock Avenue. We had snow. You know, it's pretty dangerous at night. Yeah. Somebody could use your help and take the ball roll and then you'll just sort of keep on and try to get the.
What's your pleasure project then?
Sure.
Sure.
I'm going to form a motion to that, so uh, Joe can proceed. Do we have a motion?
That's okay.
We have a second by John Paul. We're in discussion. Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all those who favor the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass. But thank you, Paul.
Um, next I have my hand, just to keep Rob busy here. Right, in that building, there's a twenty five.
I see a lot of places.
We need the sign, you've already been authorized by the board. Some of the projects.
Some of the projects.
It would be a steady gel tag.
There's 25.
Our signature.
And while you're doing that, I'll just, the board may know and for the public, the Corky's that we've been trying to get, we've finally received, Mr. Cork has signed and his brother, and the project will move along now. We're going to write a letter to the bond bank and begin construction this spring.
How are we making that with the transfer with the animal?
Down. I haven't heard back that they've rejected our proposal to put it back on the other side of the street. So far as I know, it may cost us a little more in terms of construction, but no one's rejected putting it over there. So we'll not be in the pullout area. The last thing I have on my list is Planning Commissioner Chuck Corney, who's also town resident, wanted to know if he could have permission, or I guess his daughter and some other Rutland Town students, to sell candy bars at the transfer station for their trip to Japan.
Certainly. Certainly. Any problems there?
No, I have no problems. Certainly, yeah.
Well, it's a disposal of the rapid traffic.
Yeah.
That's all I'm going to have, Rod, and I'm going to report for the scene.
You know, I've got a waiting, I haven't even been.
There's a lot of them here. You can take them off.
Take them off. It's a little bit longer to sign off.
Maybe we should just.
About 10 days.
Write your name, go ahead and sign.
The other thing, Rod, I would acknowledge, Mr. O'Brien's here.
And yes.
Greeted a new organization, name change in the organization, which I'm still in trouble with. And he's here to explain why he would seek your support for that resolution.
Okay. Okay. Anybody want to have anything for Joe? You've got Tim Perry, Skid Row Max.
Come on up. I'm sorry. Uh, Tim Hacks submitted, I guess, of the officers who were elected at the recent Republican elections. And they are exposed. Assistant Chief Chris Johnson, Captives are standing over second, Edith Clough, and Lieutenant Sir Richard McCurry and Todd Gellod. And they've been submitted by Chief Perry for the approval of the Board of Selectmen.
Motion, second, no, it's a third. We don't want his father to be captain. Uh, I said second. Second. Uh, John, you said a third. I'll second.
Motion, second, accepted, submitted. Any discussion?
I think the only thing I'd like to say is I think the selection system is working really smooth and gives all the men an opportunity to feel like they're more of a part of the picking up their offices.
Okay. Chair, answer the question. All those who favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Okay. I think David O'Brien is next.
Come on down.
Looked up who's opposite for the evening, so he will have a talk with you.
Thank you, David. Thank you.
I hope I came at the right time. Eight o'clock is the time I had, so.
Yeah, I'm glad you're a little late.
Okay, you have a resolution you'd like the board to support?
Yes.
A briefness of the purpose.
Okay. I think what I can do is kind of give you a brief summary of what the idea is or what the concept is and why we need your support for this. Basically, not to go too far back into the past and talk about how we got to where we are now. At this juncture, I'd say that we're in the midst of an economic recovery, even in Vermont, based on what economists will tell you, either if you're in Burlington area or Brooklyn, or in probably the third year of a recovery or expansion, like they call it. And based on what they're saying, even with the reduced rate of growth in 1995, we're still looking at a rate of growth of between 2 and 3 and 1/2 percent, depending upon whose estimate you use. The problem is, and I think for Rutland County specifically, is that in the time that we've gone through this recovery and added jobs, it hasn't been what a lot of people would consider value-added jobs or wage, living wage type positions. A lot of it's been service sector and retail sector that is not what we consider high-paying jobs. There's been a fair lot of effort that's gone on in the past few years as far as restructuring and making enhancements to the infrastructure in this county. Certainly, there's some things that, from an attraction standpoint, in terms of attracting industry to Rutland County, there's some very positive things from the new mall, the new high school in Rutland City, the Business and Education Partnership that has brought together the six supervisor unions together, the six superintendents, along with people from the business community. And we're in the process of putting together a nonprofit corporation that will have as the board directors those types of people, business leaders, people, community members at large, and educators. So there's some very positive things here to talk about in Brooklyn County. In addition, I think some things that have always been here in terms of quality of life and what it means to live in Vermont. I know for fact, I know the difference because I've lived elsewhere and I think this is a great place to live, raise a family, et cetera. So we think there's some things, there's an opportunity here to promote this region in a concerted effort. And we're talking about doing here is hiring a consultant, a road salesman, if you will, that would be under contract to Reddick for a period of three years, sign contract, this is the price, this is what services you're going to perform. And we want you to go out and generate prospects and ultimately jobs in this county. The target number we're talking about is 200 jobs per annum, or 600 jobs at the completion of the three-year initiative. The concept, further talking about this concept, the idea is, is that the critical mass is in Rutland County, the 60,000 residents that are there between, whether you're talking about Brandon or Castleton or Fairhaven, the city, or Clarendon, the town. And we think that by bringing in someone that can generate a prospect flow and bringing together groups of people from the community, from government, education, people like representatives from central model of service, et cetera, and members of Reddick, we think we can put together what would be considered an A-team, or people that can meet with these prospects, give them tours of various parts of the county and what we have to offer and answering the questions they might have. Reddick would have an active role from the standpoint of certainly bringing in lending and financing abilities to bear, together with the VITA and the local banks, et cetera, helping with permanent assistance and getting them through the act of 50 process if need be, et cetera. We're talking about, at this point, forming a task force that would look at doing these very specific things. Getting the funding together for the period of three years, putting together the marketing materials that are necessary, and lining up representatives from these various walks of life in the county that can be on this A-team, if you will. Right now, this particular grant that we're going for is to help fund that initial work that we're going to be doing and certainly the marketing and planning phase that has to be done. As you probably know, with any CBPG, Community Development Block grant, the more support you have from communities in the area for that type of request, the better chances you may have of having your request approved. But I think it's actually even a greater issue. I think it's an issue of having those communities on board so that it helps us get that funding. But I think it's also critical that if something is going to be done from a true county-wide basis, that the communities that are in the county take part in some way or another, in some form or another. The recruitment business is a very, very competitive enterprise. There's plenty of other communities around the country, and North Carolina always comes up, that have been very successful in doing this. And in addition to some very aggressive tax policies and favorable, let's say, power rates, those, some of those things, the key difference that differentiates any community that's been successful is the fact that they're coordinated and have it all together, that when industry or company is looking at a particular area, they know from day one this area is committed to the idea and wants them to be operating in their community. So that's a lot of the basis for what we're trying to do. Traditionally, Reddick has done this to some degree over during its 50-year life. Presently, from things that we're doing in terms of managing our own part, working with a lot of other people in the region, managing our loan funds, et cetera, it isn't realistic for the executive director, that being myself, to spend a lot of time on the road trying to actively prospect. We go to trade shows on a regular basis during the year, sometimes with the state, sometimes the CBPS, to try and garner prospects, but it's not a focused effort. It's not, it's very difficult to consistently follow up and run the shop. So the idea here is that we don't disrupt that because I think our focus the last few years has been on supporting existing companies in this area and helping them grow. And by all means, not letting any companies leave that we already have here. So we don't want to change that focus. And by having me day to day, spending my time on that, and having someone that dedicates their time to bring prospects to town, and then I would either take over or at least assist in a lot of different ways, we think that's a very smart way to go about it. So basically, the sum of that, we're talking about a three-year commitment. Right now, the numbers are up in the years and what it can cost. And it depends on how much of, what the effort is involved and how much can be taken into Reddick's normal operating basis. Certainly, there's going to be a component there of paying for this person that you can't avoid. And frankly, right now, we're not talking about raising money directly with this grant. This grant's the first step in the process. And I think right now, it's a good way, as we go through this process, to find out how the towns feel about this and how countywide people feel and what support we have. Basically, I'm after, and we're after, bringing the type of industry that certainly fits into the Vermont values in terms of the environment and what we expect as socially responsible business people. And talking about bringing in the kind of jobs that are higher in pay, higher skill. I think the great tragedy we have in this county is too many kids that graduate from high schools and colleges are forced to move out of the area because they can't find a job or what they're trained to do. So why, you know, and I'm not saying it's necessarily bad for them to do that, but at least have them, give them that choice to stay in this area if they so choose. And if not, fine, you know, there's a lot of opportunity out there. So giving you that basic overview, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the specific resolution and/or any questions you might have about the general idea.
Is there any other towns to promote? Have you spoke to any other?
Yes, yes. So far, the town of Castleton has signed with the resolution. I haven't seen a legal document yet. The town of Sherburne, the town of Clarendon, who's actually co-authoring, I can't apply for the grant directly. The town of Clarendon and the city of Rutland are co-applying. So I've heard from those municipalities, the town of Polton, he has responded so far. I'd like to think that we'll hear very soon from towns like Proctor and Longhurst, et cetera. But my general plan was to follow up with a phone poll. Any towns I haven't heard from this week, I might hope to have an opportunity like this to come up here. I'm glad you asked me, so I can explain what we're talking about.
And the last paragraph, efforts you have, your corporation and other private and nonprofit organizations, who are referring to?
Well, like the Rutland Regional Chamber of Commerce, Rutland Regional Planning Commission, or partners of ours, would take part in this in some manner or another. I mean, you think about it, the Regional Planning Commission is looking very seriously at co-locating with us. And so we would have, bring together the SBDC, Small Business Development Center, Reddick, the Chamber, and the Regional Planning Commission under one roof. And we're talking about calling it the Rutland Resource Center. When you think about it, if you have a prospect that comes and you can, under one roof, give them financing, permanent assistance, industrial site location, planning information, GIS mapping, et cetera, the information the Chamber brings to bear, plus what Jamie Stewart is the SBDC specialist. So that's a base.
I guess what my question is, is the resolution is great. I mean, you know, it will get you funding or whatever. But the resolution is between us communities and you. I'm wondering why that paragraph has to be in there. You can get anybody you want to help you. But the resolution would just be.
Oh, okay.
Us and you, and out there, you can get anybody you want. I just don't, to us, I feel it's signing a blank check on that paragraph where you can get anybody you want to help.
Yeah.
So we need a resolution for you. So one of the towns involved, and you can get anybody you want to help you. It just, it's a little immaterial. At this point, it means no one, and we do like signing a blank check for that part of it. But I wouldn't have any problem, and you could just get anybody you want. That's your, your, you're all represented, so you are anyone. You've spent quite some time.
Yeah, I, I'd have to look at that.
Yeah, well, yeah, just for heck of it. I have no problem with the resolution.
Yeah.
And you're all representative anyway. You know, I don't like to increase government unless I really have to. In this way, we wouldn't be increasing government, but if you're hard to get some help for your business.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is going to be, to make this thing happen, it's going to have to be a patchwork quilt.
Sure.
You know, it's going to be the agency development, community affairs, and, you know, bill show lights down, things gone down, and whoever we can bring to bear locally. So, but certainly it's not a blank check.
No, I understand that. What I'm saying is, I think we should be entering the.
Between the two.
Between, that's right. And then you're free to get anyone in the world that you have to, to help you do your job. And it just keeps government through a more compact situation itself.
Yeah. Certainly don't want to enhance the alphabet system. You know, it's very.
How often do you get the figures together?
I think within the next couple of months, we're going to have to be sending out an RPD very soon to see who's out there that's willing to do this. I can tell you right now that the number is fucking out there between 225,000 and 300,000 for the three-year period. And I realize that sounds like a lot of money, but right now, in Reddick, when I make a 40,000 on the low, then I create three to four jobs at a time, five to 10 jobs at a time. And I'm not knocking that type of approach, but because it's important. But when you're talking about 600 jobs out of that 225 to 300,000 dollars, you're talking about a much cheaper cost per job created by doing something like this.
Does this commit the town to any of that funding?
Not now, no.
Does it commit us in the future?
Not necessarily. I'll be honest with you. I mean, the point is, I mean, I think there's some time in the bottom row here when we identify how this thing can be funded. Sometime this summer, I have a chance to go to the state and ask for X dollars based on what my compelling argument is for why this is a worthwhile initiative. And I'm, but I'm competing with our DCs all around the state for that funding. Our intent is to go for as much of that funding as we possibly can get. But there's no question that we're not going to be able to get 100% of it that way. After you accept that, then it's a question of where do you go next to get the rest of the funding. Community at large, I think, is a piece you have to think about. And then depending upon what support there is from the towns for an idea like this, some portion from the towns, I think, would have to be something we'd have to consider. Basically, basically, if you look at the working operating budget for this thing, if it's, say, $75,000 a year, and I can get $35,000 from the state, whatever the number is, then you take the remaining portion, 20 to 30,000 dollars a year, and divide that over 28 towns, plus the community, plus whatever Reddick, Regional Chamber, Regional Planning Commission can pony up as much as they possibly can or what's acceptable. Each individual party is not carrying unnecessary burden.
You expect to get 28 towns?
Do you expect to get 28 towns?
I don't know. I can only try. I mean, I think, I think the point here is that any jobs we create in this, in this county is gonna benefit us all. Out of the 28 towns, I hope that there's plenty that believe in that idea. If they don't, I don't know, I can't account for that now. I can only say I want to get an opportunity for them to at least think about.
By signing a document like this, does this turn down the runways? Can you come up with your funds? This is a fund we're gonna have to come up with?
The only thing I worry about is this, I'd like to give an example on that. And that's what bothers me a little bit, and I'm not saying this could ever happen here. But you know, when the city built the new sewer plant, they found out that if they took Rutland Town as priority of the plant, there was a lot of federal money, a lot of extra federal money. So when the figures all fell, they had it figured, so the town ran on around 10 and 9 tenths percent of that plant. That would, that would entitle the city to another million dollars, to $100,000 federal money, and approximately $100,000 of Rutland Town's money. So Rutland Town entered with them and supposedly became 10.9% owner of the Rutland City Sewer Plant. Approximately $100,000 of our taxpayers' money went into it. Our share of the grant was another $900,000. So we got the city a million dollars to buy 10.9% of the Rutland City Sewer Plant. But what's happened here is that somewhere out there, there might be a piece of paper that says, yep, Rutland Town owns 10.9% of the Rutland City Sewer Plant. But we, no, we never had any input in it. We have nothing to do with the operation of it, and we're certainly not looking for options. What I'm trying to say is this, is that we signed that, we invested a million dollars in the Rutland City Sewer Plant. We get caught where 10% of the loan tax for these businesses and industries that you're talking about right there, that they have to pay over and above their own taxes. There is an incentive bringing, that's what I'm gonna tell you. We signed that, they charge those businesses and industries five times the rate. The city businesses and industries, or residents, or anybody else pay themselves. So to me, that kind of backfire number was all about. We were glad we entered the sewer plant because this was sort of the way to go. And for expansion of things, but we put a million bucks in there, approximately $100,000 or $900,000 in that. But then the city came and taxed our people right to death. 20% of the loan tax for 10 years, five times the city sewer rate. We support the work, 10.9% of that plant, who, nothing, it's just a piece of paper or somebody gave the city another million bucks, and it's been clocked into us ever since. And I would just hate to ever see that happen again.
Well, speaking, and I can understand what you're saying. Strictly speaking, this is not a financial commitment, this resolution. It's a philosophical support of an idea that says, if we're in favor of this idea and we think this is a positive thing to happen in our community, and it speaks to the Community Development Board on that level. And I just indicated that, yes, I mean, at some point, we'll probably have to look at some funding from the towns.
Well, I'll ask you a question, taking on what Johnson's. Suppose you get a business, if this person gets a business or that's interested in coming into this area, and they ask you, is it true that a business relocating in Rutland Town has to pay 20% ab along to the city and five times the sewer rate, but to locate, say, in Clarendon, they wouldn't have to pay those charges? How do you explain that to a potential businesses coming in such that Rutland Town is on equal footing with the other communities that don't have those exorbitant charges by the city?
Well, unfortunately, I'm not well versed in common with the sewer system. Well, I understand, I understand that it's obviously a major issue, and I can't. I wish I could say I had an answer for it, because I want us all to be working together and bringing industry in here. My answer would be not knowing what the real solution is between this disparity, to resolve the disparity, is that every town and every, every town in this county has to be taken on its own merits, on balance. I mean, every town's gonna have concerns about where they may have a disadvantage over another. For one reason or another. I mean, for a town, you may say it's the sewer system, the lack of excellent location, convenience to a lot of services, et cetera, that other towns may not be able to?
In a generous tax stabilization situation, which a lot of communities don't have. I mean, that is an obstacle, similar to an obstacle.
Some towns have charges that do that.
I think we've always been very pro-industry.
I mean, yeah, there's no question we've been pro-industry to get the industry in, but here we are, given a tax break that comes out of Rutland Town resident pockets, and the city has these other exorbitant charges that come out of the businesses that come in.
Doing full profits.
And there's, I don't know, how much money does it come in? I don't know, you know, I can't.
You're new on the block, and I don't think you understand it, but what I told you is exactly true, what Johnson is exactly true. Another thing, you want to why, and I believe it's because the industrial parks in Clarendon, and we also helped them on that, into them, because the sewer line had to come through Rutland Town.
Yeah, I understand that.
We totally work with them.
I understand.
But I noticed that the initial plan here is Rutland City and Clarendon, and then all others. Was there a particular reason for that? The town of Clarendon, and then all others who may want to?
Well, I think it was because, I think when we first started talking about this idea, we approached them because I think they were, they were partners from the back with the park. I think that, let's face it, the city's got a fair amount of infrastructure investment that I think they've got motivation to market. I think we should just take advantage of that, quite honestly. I mean, I live in Longford, and you're down there, 15 minutes away from a regional mall. I think that's a slam dunk for me. And there's a lot of other benefits that have been created in the county we all should take advantage of. By the same token, we can make that available to the, to the prospect.
Would you accept an amendment to this resolution, or is this, is this a sample draft?
That is a sample draft you work with. By all means, I'm open to things that would make you feel more comfortable.
What are your timelines for a response?
I'd like to do it by the end of this month, because the application deadline is the seventh of February.
By the end of January, you want it?
Right.
When do we meet again?
Six, second?
Six, right away.
I mean, what you could do is?
Next week at the school.
Next week at the school?
Yeah, that's. I would just have a little time. Your ideas grow, for the region that's growing, but you know, and I'm sure for the rest of my, my main project, Rutland Town.
Yep.
And we've had experiences, and I just want to make sure it's all about. But I hate to get into disagreement, and then, I guess John is singularity, then two years down the road, it's gonna cost our taxpayers a whole lot of money. And there's nothing here that says that it won't cost us some money to continue this and not. Well, certainly, as a way, I, I, I personally think I would sign it after that last paragraph was changed. I, I got nothing against you going to the Chamber and anybody else. I'm just thinking of, to keep government or blogs, it would be you and us. And then whatever you have to do to work hard, to do work hard, to satisfy us is your business. You can get all the organizations out there you want to, and we're dealing with you, you and us. We've always done it that way, and I hate to see it expand. You know, government today everywhere is trying to be cut because it's become a problem, and there's no need of us expanding when they're trying to cut it. But my, your ideas are good, and I appreciate it myself.
Yeah, I, I know this is, this is not the easy thing to pull off. There's a lot of people we need to bring together to do it, but I think there's no reason why we shouldn't use a shot. I think the timing's right. And given that we haven't enjoyed, let's say, what's happened on the national scene as far as the economy's concerned, I think the timing's right because the economy's healthier in the national scene. Companies will more act, relocate, and things are good, time's good than when they're not. So, appreciate you having me here. And if you have any other questions, I'll let you know. If there's detail things on that resolution that you want me to take a look at?
Yeah, definitely, I think we would probably discuss somewhere along the line of a meeting or something.
Yeah, we're gonna have to.
But if we did something on the sixth, the next morning, that'd be good enough for you, right? So we meet on the sixth, so if next week at that meeting, we could discuss it or something, and get something out of it, or whatever.
Yeah, that'd just be, I mean, if the seventh is a date that has to be here, that's something you know.
They are coming pretty early.
How long are you gonna have to get this thing, get this underway?
There's no requirement, that I understand. I'm going out after as many as I can. And I'll be honest, I mean, it's a seventy board, too.
Sure, you know where we're coming from.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd like to think, I mean, I think we can appreciate for those of us that operate in development efforts in this region, we'd like to think we all come in along and be working together. But I certainly can't speak to some of the issues you raised.
Well, I mean, there are, there are some language changes that might be acceptable. Certainly would relieve my concerns of a financial commitment further on down the road without seeing what that commitment is.
Yeah, I understand.
And I mean, I would suggest to you that in that first be it resolved paragraph, do you have the resolution ready?
No, I don't, unfortunately.
Do you have any problems for?
I don't make it sound like almost anything not of mine.
I think John has a point in the last paragraph.
What other do I have?
That the paragraph immediately before it, now therefore be it resolved that the town of Rutland, if we substitute the word endorses as opposed to joins with and supports, would that do the trick for you? Is that enough of an endorsement from our community?
For that final paragraph there?
Well, second to the last, not the last.
I mean, we do endorse your efforts, but I think joins with and supports might tie us into a future commitment. The extent, we don't know, and I don't think we have any business getting into something, you know, again, without knowing what the parameters are.
Why don't you check on that, get back to Joe?
Yeah, I appreciate that language obligates you to. I can tell you, and this is the problem when you start getting into legal leaves. I can tell you that my intent here is to say, right now, we want your intangible support, if you will, down the road. If we're talking about fundraising, I think we've gotta come to you with a much more clear cut, here's what the initiative is, is how much it's gonna cost, and what we, we hope to have you help us with.
You know, I hear you, but I'm concerned that?
Why don't we join, and if we only deal with the money you give us for about? I'm just kidding you, but.
Gosh. Well, I tell you, when you find out?
I would think that Proctor, that tunnel would be two prosperous tunnels for there, right close by. Proctor was a mom out of company gone, West Longwood was a thing, but I didn't know it's gone. I mean, the last twenty things, I would think there'd be two tunnels, and you would be?
Well, actually, West Rutland, I think, is a given, I talked to the town manager the other day, and that's, that's fine. I think they'll be okay with it.
Why don't you check on that, and give it to Joe, and Joe can get with us?
Sure, yeah, that'd be fine. I, you know, I don't, I don't want to be going into this theme uneasy.
Well, I want an agreement that we would like to do business with them, and let them do business with whoever they would like.
Yeah, we'd like to support their efforts. I think you got, you know, I thought you were doing a heck of a job in the community.
I like this very much, yeah.
Well, I think that's, I think that's great. I'm glad you're that.
Glad you're all.
Kind of ways to do it so that you feel easy.
That's all. I guess we've said we're gonna do it, we just like to have it done the right way.
I'm not saying that's a wrong way, but. I think you could, you know, assert that your least expectations, that's how that goes. All right, well, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
That's my, I'm giving the resolution, I will.
That's, I have a few extras, something.
I have more here.
I went into the files, I didn't want them to gotten gone. Okay, last item, we're to select recycling and solid waste power. Oh, boy. I didn't get into that too much, did you? I'm fully on it for, well, if you got the, you go out on it. Who's on that committee? Who's on the recycling committee? It was all left for everybody.
I did talk to your friend Henry John, if you can share some of the comments with you if you want.
Well, I guess it was a very, it was a little long trip committee, so I didn't get.
Beyond that, because, this is a, this is a very strict commitment, but, but it's.
Well, I naturally use suggestions, that's why.
Yeah.
I had to agree with it. I don't really have any suggestions, so I'll, I'll have their hand. We've got four proposals for us, through from local people, Cella, Hubbard, Rutland Stores Trailers, which are the Almicky brothers, and also the East Mountain Transport out of Rowland. Those are the four that responded to our requests, four proposals. They're similar in some regards and very different in others. Read them. Fairly easy. Joe did talk to the friend Henry, and maybe should be for us, but there was.
Yeah, I asked some, Craig, I got Kepler, who's been involved with the transfer of recyclables from the beginning for us, to look at these, and he did, and because we don't, because several of the businesses bid it, because several of the businesses bid it in such a way that they'll compensate us for some recyclables that leave there, we really need to know how much is coming out of there. We don't have any records, we've never received any records from Rutland Stores, Trailers. We've asked several times for some records. We don't know what the fill rate is. Therefore, he couldn't calculate what revenues to expect. So with that said, we had apples and oranges, but just looking at it, great feeling was, the bottom one would be the East Mountain Transport. Yeah, so it was the biggest, and the per pole cost was the highest. He ranked Casella's, Almicky's, and Hubbard's, one, two, and three, so to speak, like that. Casella's offering the most in recycling opportunities. And also, if I saw it right again tonight, it was $5 per ton. But he said Almicky's and Hubbard's were both good, and he wouldn't be doing bad to go with any of them, but he felt, you know, Casella did have a more recycling, but other than that, it's, they're very similar. And there's solid waste charges, and it's cheap. And we did, Mike, my man was here tonight, and so I did speak with Mike Friday, and I had him to him, for instance, remember? And I think, and I didn't read the letter, Mike, so I don't know, but for instance, Casella, in their original proposal, said, we'll charge you a processing fee, but they didn't say what it was. Mike is correct, by the way, they estimated it to be about $30 a ton of processing. He might be able to explain it, what they do is?
Recyclables?
I'm not, I have to look at the physical, all the modern average. Today, they're taking the market, the only American goods, the price, and they're gonna split that with us, but they're gonna charge us a fee, too. And that fee generally is $30 a ton, then we split it, we remove money, they may be like giving those recyclables to market. It would be different than the way Almicky's wanna do it and the way the Hubbard's would do it.
Does the transportation mean that, too? Isn't that $30?
No, no, that's separate.
That's an extra. How do I do it?
What do we end up with, peanuts? No.
You would pay $110 per cord of transportation. Then you would, you would pay a processing fee of a constant figure on this time. We would mark all the materials, all of the remaining materials. We'd like to recycle 20 materials for you, if that's possible. The average revenue per ton basis across the board for the full range of recyclables is probably equal $100 a ton. You would deduct $30 from that and split the balance. So if the processing charge is $30 a ton, and recyclables in the marketplace are getting $100 a ton, we would split the $70 a ton with you, which is $35 a ton, Reddick.
But out of that $70, we still gotta put a fueling fee.
That's right.
But what are we gonna have with?
Well, it depends, it's hard to say, because it depends on the volume and the way of materials that you're gonna get for recyclables, and without, without a track record or a history, it's, it's hard to say. But like, you know, I can, can I take the hot seat for a minute?
You certainly can.
Oh, any talent. I need a girlfriend.
I think there's, there's a number of things that you have to look at. One is that we haven't looked at, look at the volume or weight, so it's, it's difficult to say. But there are a number of factors, I think, in the proposal that should be looked at in conjunction with these particular numbers, although the numbers are probably the most important. I've written, I guess, with probably is a fairly lengthy document compared to some other proposals you received. But I, I think that's because I have a lot to say, because Casella has a lot to offer, okay? I'm noticing the proposal that, and I, I think we all know who Casella is, and Casella's management in our track record, but we've been recycling since 1975. We're the largest recycler in the state in terms of both volume of recyclables. Okay, we process maybe 40,000 tons of recyclables every year. Also in terms of the number of different recyclables that we process. You may get proposals from other recyclers that will do the top five or six items. Maybe they'll do the mountains, maybe they'll do? Maybe they'll do the metals, maybe they'll do some fibers. That's great, and those, those are commanding great prices in the marketplace right now. But they, you have to do the lower standard, the lower end of recyclables, they won't do the glass, because that, that doesn't have much revenue in the marketplace right now, they won't do some of the plastics, okay? Maybe they won't do textiles. For everything that they don't recycle, you've got to pay to get rid of. And that's going to cost you sixty, sixty-five, seventy dollars, whatever, it's going to cost you to transport and get rid of that stuff. What we want to do is to help you make the most of that facility up there. We've invested hundreds of thousands of dollars, it's a great facility, it's practical, it's functional, why not get the most out of it? And then realize the greatest return on that facility.
That's what we want.
Okay? So, the forty thousand tons a year recyclables that we generate in the state, that we process in the state, that has great leverage for us in the marketplace. As the markets improve, and we hope that they will for certain items, the revenues we see will go up. As they go up, the town gets that more revenues in the, in the shared arrangement. There are other things too, and we, you know, if we were fortunate enough to be awarded the job, I like to think of Casella as more than just a hauler, who's going to hook up your box and take it somewhere and dump it and bring it back. I mean, when, when you work with Casella, I like to think that we have a number of different staff people that are also called experts. We've got, we've got marketing experts, we've got people that install and repair trash compactors. If we notice on a weekly or monthly statement that, uh, maybe you're dealing eight or nine tons in your compactor instead of ten, ten or eleven tons, that you should be, we're going to call you, we're going to let you know. If you want to ask some questions, and, and maybe there's some problems, maybe there's an adjustment we submit in your compactor. We'll be there, and we'll make that adjustment, we give more tons in the compactor, it'll generate less trips for you, it'll save money. Okay? In the proposal, we're also offering to have a staff person from our recycling division be present at the transfer station for the first couple of weeks that you're, that you're operating there, I know you're operating now, but while we're there, we'll have someone free, okay? Um, I think that we can observe what's going on, that we can make some helpful suggestions, and I think that we can, uh, perhaps, uh, you know, refine the system that you're using now, or make improvements to it in terms of just the mechanics, just the way things are done. You know, maybe you want, maybe you want some temporary storage, uh, for, say, lightweight plastics, okay? And, and you'll take those bags of plastics and you put them in the, uh, in the container on top of other different recyclables. So those containers, those recycling containers are completely full. They have to divize and then separate them into two or three compartments, okay? Someone else might haul it if one compartment is full, because you, you need space for that compartment. We'll take a look at maximizing your haul by filling those containers completely. Okay, so there's, because I, I think that when you look at, um, when you look at the dollars, and you also look at the experience and the expertise and the extra mile that we're willing to go, I think in the long run, it will clearly be to your advantage.
Say that we want, we need to get something changed up there. But you're going to charge to take a truck up to the change in a box?
If you need to move the box around?
That has happened, hasn't it?
It has happened. Sometimes, for instance, someone may put a non-compartmentalized box inside the building, and it should have been the compartmentalized box, we, we need, because we don't own a truck, we need to get on the phone and call somebody and have them go up there at very short notice, and move that box and put the other one in. Yeah, well, I, I assume that, I assume that whoever put the box there would be the one that was awarded the job. Well, this is already, this has happened before, we've had, this has happened already, and there's no one, you know, working for us, as you know, so probably we'd change, I would guess, on a different scale.
Would that be next?
We're not, we're not going to, we're not going to, we're going to die and be to death, I mean, something like that is something that would, that would, wouldn't even be questioned. I mean, we're so close, and our facility is so close, the trucks are so close, we would go do it. You probably wouldn't even know about it, because you're transfer station operators, if we give us a problem, we take care of it.
Yeah, definitely.
If there was a bill, you'd know about it.
We wouldn't know, I mean, the bill's come across this desk.
That's something you would know about, and I, you would probably never ever see a bill like that, for that kind of a service. There are other things we're working on as well. There's, there's a number here for construction and demolition, transportation, and disposal. And I can't sit here tonight and say to you that, that we can do better, but I can tell you some of the things that we're working on. For instance, with construction and demolition material, right now, we're looking at grinding this material, and perhaps grinding it with sludge, and perhaps using it as a covering material, whatever. Um, I can't tell you that the rate is going to be, you know, fifty dollars a ton instead of seventy dollars or whatever, two months from now, but what I can say to you is that Casella is looking into these types of things that are going to save you money. Okay? Uh, I can't make a commitment, because it'll probably take two or three months before we get funds from the state and, and our study's done, and, and we're allowed to do this kind of thing, but if Casella's all by, I'd like to think that, that if there was a, a working relationship established with the town, as, as we would like to, that over time, you would realize far more benefits than I have been able to put on paper to your plans.
How much? What, what is, what is, what's your CPI increase? How much is your CPI increase?
Last couple of years, it's been between two and three percent, the last twelve months, it's probably been two point seven, two point eight percent, something like that. Two point nine eight, maybe even three percent.
Three percent, so-called.
Yeah.
National scale, same, yeah.
Well, even though Tony wasn't here, he had asked if the board could make a decision, I mean, Willie are, they feel that they need to get some, someone online to help them, because the bins aren't filling up.
Yeah, I understand that.
And they really didn't really have this.
People recycling, and as big as those containers are, they're starting to fill, so.
I went to the transfer station before, it was, well, it was cylinder construction, but it wasn't operational yet, but the containers were there, and I saw the different compartments and how they were set up. And as far as the proposal, I submitted, you know, possible configurations of the containers. So, these are the kinds of things that we would like to get into, to help you maximize the potential of that facility. This is one possible configuration, if this doesn't work, we would change it. You know, if there's a volume of one thing that's coming in that deserves two compartments as opposed to another, we'll make those changes, or we'll make some recommendations for you, you know, for you to approve, we shouldn't do anything, but I like to think that we have a lot to offer in terms of working with the town to, to, to really fine tune the system and, and get the maximum return for investment. I'd like to reserve a couple boxes of those candy bars, okay, for the kids to chew.
What's your pleasure, gentlemen? We've got four proposals here. Thank Mike for coming over, explaining things. I don't know how much time we have left before those, depending, have to be pulled. Uh, they're not full, but they're getting full, it's been opened since, I believe, the fourth of January.
Tony's other concern, and Willie's, is right now, some of these items, depending on who's taking it, they have to be handled differently. Some, some they can, some haulers may allow them to mix glasses, others don't allow that, others. So right now, they're kind of taking things, but whoever piles it first, I'm going to have to agree to just take it the way it is. What they're concerned about is, they want to get someone online so they can find out how they should be taking it, and then start telling the people that, because there will be more of the people keep coming.
Right.
And doing what they want to do, it's going to make it more difficult, what's a hauler select? So they want to, okay.
What's your pleasure?
I'm, I'm just, it sounds good to me.
Do you think offers the, the best deal? Right now, our, our trash should be hauled by Hubbard Community, we're, we're, we're under the temporary arrangement we have with them, there's no contract with them. And, uh, we've had the box, I believe, pulled once, we're on the second box.
I think we did a second pull Saturday.
We pulled again, okay. I don't know what the tonnage was that was in the box, I haven't heard that yet. I haven't been billed, so I guess that's the first one, notice we'll get when the first bill comes in. So the trash should be taken care of. The issue, the issue is that we have recycling containers filling presently, and we have no arrangement with anyone at the present time to take care of those when they're full. And we have four proposals on the table, and we should attempt to make a decision as soon as we can, to select someone to deal with those two cycles. I think I'll attack them, boys. Be careful, forever hold your peace.
Well, I don't know, some guys should be abstaining, so some pretty good friends of Al Nickys.
Hi. Well, so you, so we are, we are, we're at Casella's, so. It's been a long time, you know, I think it's been a long time.
You need to do what's right for the town now.
Yeah, Dad and I, we've done a lot of, a lot of seller halls and things together. Well, I'm pretty happy with my board, I think. I just didn't want to get a compliment.
I think we trust you.
As long as you don't have four, you're busy on the block. I know everyone here for a lot of years, other than the gentlemen from East Mountain Transport, this is my, and all the other people, it's local, so, uh. I'd better stay. You're back, I'm talking to my wife. So what's your pleasure? I've been in, I've been in friends with. Hey. Been in business together. That's a car for Howard John. Come down there.
Yeah, I know.
What's your pleasure? You want to make, you know, we could schedule a meeting for next Monday night prior to, we will, by the way, prior to a bunch of presentation. Normally we're second, so I would imagine it would second you that way.
We're second, yeah.
Um, I think we could go till then. Beyond that, I don't think we could, I think we're going to be full.
That'll be on the thirtieth, Ron?
The thirtieth, we definitely, definitely have to make a decision. A few people are having problems tonight, so.
I think we're talking about hours to, to help you make a decision.
I, I don't know, probably up to everyone here. The place is not going to change, I mean, what we got before is our, or what's going to be before us in another week. Are there any questions, if anyone has, uh, interpretation of what's, what's been set forth? You know, see something, do something, I guess that building could go with all the garbage up there. No, not garbage recyclables. Recyclables, garbage is being taken care of. Do your thing. Huh? Do your thing. I mean, I didn't have a time, I didn't have a question for you. You're an informed guy. I'm happy with them. Happy with Casellas, I'm happy with Hubbard's, I'm happy with Al Nickys. Mike has been here and putting together a meeting. So just you guys want to speak up because you're friends, well, they're my friends too, I've been in business with their, with their dads. It's a bunch of hard rocks. We should make a motion, since you're friends of all three of them, man. You guys want me to do it, but you're back, they want me to do it again. Don't feel to turn this back on. Don't feel to turn it back on, so, I can shut them off, I don't feel to turn them back on. What's your pleasure, gentlemen? Chair's not going to make a motion. Trying, you're not alone here, Willie. How many of you represent? Well, personally, I wouldn't mind another week if we could do this next week.
Can I make one more statement?
Sure.
I can, I can appreciate.
Well, sorry to go by.
I can appreciate the diversity. There's a lot to be said for friendships and relationships and, um, things of that nature, and, and if the proposals were equal, um, I think, I think you'd be obligated to award it to, to a local person. Not that Casella's not local, but. Perhaps to someone who's, who's, uh, who's worked in the past. But I think that at a certain point, you as a board have an obligation, it's an obligation to the taxpayers, and I, I, I know I have a biased perspective, but I think I'm a paper, and I think Casella has one off, I mean, obviously, that's my, it's my opinion, and that's what I'm trying to relay to you tonight, that I think you got to, I think you got to let your, your obligation to the taxpayers cover in a way you can make decisions. So put together an agenda for the.
It's up to these, these guys, I mean, going to have a motion to table, if they don't want to deal with the issue today, it's on the agenda to be dealt with. It would be a motion to table until another day, which would be the thirtieth of the next, which is not a, a normal meeting night for us, but because it is budget hearing night at the school, we have a couple items that have to be dealt with, I think, uh, for that time. So, we're looking at a weekend tonight, if a board wishes to do that, I'm just, I'm just giving them their options. I'll move the table until next week. About a second. And a second. My other comment is, and I'm a fool to, we'll make a decision. We have to, uh, those containers will be full, and we have to, we have to decide then. So whoever awarded the contract has a chance to go in there and assess what we have, and make the best on any adjustments, adjustments. So, on the thirtieth, we will decide. Yeah, it's, it's generally, generally, I mean, you're. So, I'm a company. So, anybody have anything else, that's all about the agenda.
Right, I'd be on point, um, I should, I don't do that, I mean, I should try to, we can, we can, that's one though, to. Yeah. We're not good for DLCT, you know, the, the, yeah, our division, we're looking at very closely, um, because we're starting to see a whole lot of activity going on, and, uh, I know, the position on lines these, but new girls that are being crafted, brought in, uh, the committee on the floor, whatever, are always listed there, and positions, you know, it's been very, I didn't pull out of curiosity, when it first, I was coming about years ago, but I've become more and more aware of what it says. I think it may, there's, there's five property tax plans, right, which is, unfortunately, last, unfortunately, whichever way you look at it, uh, the last two weeks went up to my ten property tax appointments. There's already one, I'd rather do that, yeah. I'm not looking to get any of those plans.
Wrong town.
Yeah.
No, we're going to hurt.
Yeah.
You get penalized for running a good business, someone has done it to me. I don't know which ones. If you're good, you're going to get hurt, if you're bad, you're going to get helped. You're out of system.
It's, uh, you know, sometimes you want to make sure that children everywhere have, have an education, but, uh, in other terms, it really does hit the towns that have worked very hard, you know? It hits them very hard.
The problem, the problem I have with us, Steve, is the goal is to create more property tax, well, some of it's already low.
Right.
You belong. And, and find our other ways, son, huh? They're going to wait, they're going to penalize you for doing what you should be to begin with. And other individuals are going to be funded through all different kinds of revenue raising mechanisms, like, you know, if someone is low, then, then everybody. Let's be realistic, you've got a town right here, that's low, as low as anywhere, if not lower, right? We don't create any big funds coming from the state for school aid or anything else. We don't create any big funds coming from the state for school aid or anything else.
Right.
You've got a town next door, and I won't name towns, who is real hot. And besides that, they get a million dollars a year school aid from the state.
Right.
So we're not only not hot in the state, Andy, we're subsidizing these people with our tax money to get those people out. And here they go, we haven't taken anything from them. They've gotten it all, and now they're going to shovel it onto us, so to say. And they will still be getting it all, and I, you know, I just don't understand the system.
The strategy is to stop it to the towns that have those tax rates. And I think the only thing that we can try to do, you know, I don't know, I can't say it's so that, I know a plan is going to pass, that probably will have a statewide property tax, and I'm going to oppose the statewide property tax, but. Thing I'm going to try to do is to try to get some credits into the bill for communities that have done a lot of tax stabilization. Try to get some of that money taken into consideration, um, and refunded or somehow, uh, credited towards the minimum tax that you have to pay, but at some point, I'll go through the plans in detail with you. You should know that they're not, there's no plan right now that does wonderful things for the town. You know, each of them have plus and minuses, but they're really, we're going to pay more under any of those plans.
There's no question about, we're on the address.
We get billed in, and once the state starts running it, in the long run, everybody will pay more, I guarantee you that.
We get very little back for what we pay in. There's a tremendous amount of tax revenue generated in this town through the different levels of taxation from income tax, produce, meals, gasoline, cigarettes, rooms and meals. We gen, I, I, it'd be interesting to know how much we generate. And it's far more than we receive in return. So already, we're contributing and receiving a very small share of what we contribute in. And these proposals, proposals are asking us to give more.
Actually, one of the reasons. Sorry, should say that one of the things that, I, I don't know, it wasn't the original governor's, the governor's original proposal, I don't know what happened to it between the time he announced it and, and the time he introduced the bill, but it was my understanding that there were local option taxes for those twenty-three towns in the state that, um, met the criteria for his.
Well, he asked for, for the headache.
That's what, that's what, uh, was supposed to be, like, yeah, like the carrot to get these towns on board in that regard. I mean, that would be fine. And well, a town could raise a significant amount of money, you know, sales and, sales or rooms and meals tax, so that we could sort of, you know, help other communities without killing our homeowners. And somewhere, that got taken out of the bill, I don't know where it was, but that may be something that we could try to do.
The state doesn't want to relinquish the taxing authority it has to anyone else. I mean, that's, that's the position they've had for years.
The state wants to take over all taxing authority, is what it tells me. The state of Vermont wanted to raise any money for anything, all, there's only one way in the state of Vermont to do it. And I'm killing the people of Vermont, and that's through the sales tax.
Yeah.
We may not like to hear that, but that's the only way to do it.
Yeah.
Everybody pays.
Right.
They got California, and they got New York, and you're paying. Everybody pays it. So everybody pays a real small percentage. And that's the only way that state of Vermont will ever be fair to their own people.
Yeah.
By increasing taxes.
Well, we export one third of those taxes to out-of-state residents, so those are the best taxes to raise. Because the third, the tax burden is not shoulder over mine, but, so I guess the strategy that we have to follow is to try to, uh, soften the blow. You know, I think we're going to be successful if we try to, the twenty-three communities aren't going to be successful in blocking that proposal. And I think it would be smarter for us to try to soften the blow of the, of whatever plan emerges so that towns like Wellon Town don't, you know, end up with this huge burden without any kind of.
How, how do you know to soften the blow?
Well, I think the way you can soften the blow is to try to do things like, uh, credit, uh, uh, tax breaks that local communities have given for industries located in the community. Doing things like trying to get local option taxes added to the, to the minimum property tax. The problem is that all the mandates that go along with the proposal are also, even if we won't get any ban, any benefit from it, we'll get the mandate from it, so that our school board won't be able to spend more than three percent. It doesn't, I mean, it, in some sense, they won't have to abide by that because they'll get state aid, but it's still a, a ramification, you know. Officially, we won't be abiding by the law, you know. Um, and we also get hit the teachers' retirement fund in the governor's plan. He tries to take the teachers' retirement contributions, eighteen million dollars a year right now, um, and return that responsibility to local communities. Some communities will do really well, Wellon City will do really well because they'll get more state aid because of it. Wellon Town, well, we'll get new, we'll get a new expense, we're buying state aid. So it's, we have good plans out there, you know, we're just going to try to soften the blow and see if we can do that, um, in the process. Otherwise, we're just going to have to, I don't know how we block it, and it's, only twenty-three communities, uh, two hundred and, something, two hundred and fifty, or seventy? Forty? Um, so what's my report, anytime you, I can go through the details of the plan whenever you guys have time, or if you want to hear them. But, but you think that'd be helpful?
Crossover date is when.
So, what?
Crossover date on bills.
Crossover is.
February?
Uh, no, it's the Friday following town meeting day.
Okay.
But there's also, you can, Speaker can rule crossover. Exception, you know, exception crossover for those that he chooses to.
Speaker sounds like he wants to adjourn April twenty-second.
Yeah, he's watching the clock, he really is.
Took a jar off him.
We'll, uh, we'll watch this very closely because this has the potential of a major impact here.
Changes the whole bracket.
It really does.
On that, we aren't, uh, switched out anymore. They're taking the tax base away from us.
Yeah, I mean, it sort of nullifies a lot of, a lot of work that went into creating a low tax base. And what's that?
Four hundred years of dummy running.
Yeah. So we have to try to soften that blow if we can, um, and that's my strategy, is to try to, I don't think it's going to be worth putting energy in and trying to beat it, because I don't think I'll win. But if I can try to soften the blow, uh, some of those proposals, we'll try.
Is there any consensus between the House and the Senate on anything?
There is.
Are you still going in opposite direction, did we, did we last year?
Well, there's actually, the, the biggest change was, and we actually didn't win it, Senator Blumer was opposed to statewide property tax.
Absolutely.
Uh, the problem with Senator Blumer was to propose the regional tax sharing. Which, which was even worse. Um, Senator Webster, who's taken his place, supports the statewide property tax, is committed to it. Um, and I think he's probably got enough support to get something passed in the Senate. That's what I'm saying, I think that at a minimum, we probably need statewide property tax. Does he suppose that at a minimum, at a minimum? The only person who really sort of, Barbara Snelling is sort of saying no to everything. Uh.
I don't think she's going to increase funding.
I think he's funding it of the states.
Right, Florida.
People think sales tax and five percent.
She's talking about raising.
Sales tax?
Yeah, she's right.
That's the only way to go. Well, I don't know why, why, I don't know why you people up there haven't approached and made a lot of noise on that. All last year and the beginning of this year, I told you, if you're going to give a tax in the state of Vermont, it's got to be, it was a sales tax. I haven't heard anybody fighting for it.
Everyone includes a sales tax in the, in the proposals.
Well, I want to tell you something, it's a whisper.
Yeah, the problem is that the, the town governor's numbers don't add up. Fifty percent funding, she, her idea of fifty percent funding isn't really what the state says fifty percent funding is.
Get right down to the bottom line, you need to figure out they're adding up.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you believe that, but I think everybody believes that the sales tax is going to stay at five percent because it was, it was supposed to sunset back to four, and I think it's going to stay at five. It only raises forty million dollars.
There's another important element that's being forgotten here. Where is the money going, is being spent now? How is it being spent? Is it being spent the most efficiently?
Right.
Most efficient way possible? Where's the waste, is there any waste? There is, where is it? It, it's, it's.
That's true.
It's in a, it's inappropriate to continue to fund things without finding out, increase funding to things without finding out where the money's going and, and is it being spent wisely?
The existing, the existing system.
I mean, there has to be a, a, I believe, a real in-depth study done to determine are we getting back a dollar for every dollar we put in? And not just continue to build more money and spend more.
I think there's consensus around two issues. One is that we have too many administrators. But then again, it's hard to say, it's hard to find a plan that you can get support for that will shrink the number of administrators, because no one wants to lose their administrators. But, um, the other thing is that some of the E S A standards are too stringent and cost a lot of money, especially the size of your classrooms and that kind of stuff. But we have a big problem with special ed. The federal government promised when they, when they passed the special ed mandates, they were going to fund fifty percent of the cost of special ed. They're at four percent now. You know, we're at thirty-six percent. Um, so it's hard to, it's, uh, like getting blood from a rock, but, you know, we're going to have to be watching this debate pretty consistently. Certainly needs your help. If you see something that, that catches your attention, I really would appreciate your input. Your confusing plans. But, uh, anyway.
We will change some more.
Yeah, when we get a final blow, I'll obviously get copies to you and explain it to you and turn that into.
Thank you.
Rock you to it.
Very good, thank you.
Well, I wish you would make notes up there, that those towns that are the well-off towns are not only well-off among themselves, but they have been no cost to the state either. Like, where these not-so-well-off towns have been a drastic cost to the state right along. Why do they want to hurt a town that's helping them? And that's exactly what we're doing, helping the state of Vermont.
Clearly, they need it because they want to go after the wealthy.
Absolutely.
Well, you know, John, the Robin Hood principle doesn't operate in reverse. It's hard to steal from people that don't have it to give the people that do.
Yeah, they don't have to steal, anybody give it to us because we weren't asking for it.
No, I understand, but I mean, it's very clear to me what they're doing.
We're self-supporting, so to say.
They don't know where the money is. That's what they're doing, you know. So, you know, I, in some ways, I can understand why they're doing that because there really is a huge outcry of property tax reform. Every single legislator heard it, you know, uh, all throughout the state. And, um, there is, I think, a cry for, which is why I'm saying, I think we can, we can oppose the, we can oppose the idea of property tax reform, it's inevitable. It's just a question of how we soften the blow so that Wellon Town doesn't get killed in the process. That's where we are.
Okay, well, we'll stay tuned.
We can ensure the next few weeks.
Thanks for the good news, Steve.
Yeah. So, we will. It was, it was quite a fact that that was probably one issue. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not all well in here.
Thank you.
Uh, no, no other agenda.
No time Monday night?
Oh, yeah.
Um, we should get there probably around six, seven o'clock.
Um, we go on first.